Okay. I'll fill in some.
A little while.
Sure. I might, let me, you know.
Right.
Do you have any better numbers from you?
Let me just kind of point out in the top part here. You know, when the renewal came out, we were looking at a twenty-nine point one percent renewal. Of course, we went back and we negotiated with the company to get that down. It shows you here what the current is in the left corner there. It shows you there what the renewal is. Okay, so that first box is the same plan. And then alternate one is a different change, deductible, but still a hundred percent plan. The alternate two, of course, is an eighty percent plan. And alternate three is an eighty percent plan. So these are some options with your current carrier. Of course, we went out for a bit, we looked at Blue Cross Blue Shield. We looked at Aetna, we looked at United Healthcare. We had two declines currently from Blue Cross and United. Aetna did quote, which we did put a couple of options on the back, okay? And it shows you some options that might make sense compared to the current plan in blue. But the reality is, when you really evaluate the numbers, it probably still makes sense to stay with the manager. There's not enough change to do that. We are still having some plan challenges. And when you look at our loss ratios, we're running about a hundred and thirty-two percent, which means that for every dollar paid in premium, the company's paying out a dollar thirty-two. So when you have that kind of loss run currently, it's real hard to obtain, you know, other real competitive proposals because of those loss runs. So what I did, Mr. Miller had come by today and I had just finished up with Laura and Mr. Winters and he thought, well, this might be something good that we could distribute tonight to at least illustrate some ideas that y'all might have as some cost savings. One of the thoughts is, is that you could do what's called a dual option, where you offer maybe one of the plans, you know, in far right over here is the base. And you can still offer the hundred percent plan, but offer both of them, but you as the city determine this is how much we pay every month and then let the employees decide, you know, which one they pick. Because I know it's real hard sometimes that when you have to pick a plan to go with, you know, you're picking a form where if you do the dual option, they can pick the one that they think fits or needs the best, okay? And we'll get into tomorrow evening all of the other ancillary coverages that are available when we do the full presentation. But he wanted me to at least drop this off to you. And then I visited with Mr. Winters about that and he said, that'd be fine, let's just go over that. It shows you what the monthly premium is, so let me explain that if you're not clear there. You see what the current is in that one column here. And then you see what the renewal amount is. This forty-five represents forty-five employee only. This two represents the number of folks that are on employee and spouse. Five employee children and three family, okay? So that's what the breakdown is. So when you total that up, that's fifty-five total employees. Currently, the city pays a hundred percent for the current cost of the four-ten-twenty-eight, okay?
And the difference on the others for the employee and spouse?
Well, normally what happens is, is I'm just showing you the gross rate, okay? So if you're paying four-ten-twenty-eight currently, you would subtract that from the nine-oh-two-sixty-two and that's what they would pay out of the paycheck payroll deduction, yes. So you would have to, if you decide on any of these employee-only amounts that you're still going to continue to fund that a hundred percent, that would be deducted from those other tiers.
And that's this question, do we pay a hundred percent on the employee and spouse, employee and child?
No, no, just employee only, just.
So, okay, so.
That's what I was asking, is the difference?
But we pay the deductible.
Oh, no, that's a different piece, that's the health maintenance.
It's a health reimbursement arrangement, which I'm going to go into more details about that tomorrow. We'll talk about some other items as well, but.
So, one of, the total savings between the hundred percent plan and, and I'm just going to, alternate three is sixty-two thousand, two-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars and ninety-six cents a year, but we wouldn't realize that, we would only realize the difference on those forty-five points, correct?
No, you realize the difference on all fifty-five because you have fifty-five employees that you're paying.
Well, I know that this, that, we realize the whole piece of it, but currently, the employee is contributing the difference for spouse.
Well, they are.
Okay, so what I'm looking for, budget dollars, so really the budget dollar that we're looking at is the forty-five.
Is the forty-five employee, well, that's the same case.
Okay.
Well, no, we're looking at fifty-five total employees.
At the base rate of the employee only?
Yes.
Okay.
Because there is fifty-five employees that you're paying a hundred percent of their cost on, so that is correct.
So fifty-five times five-one-three-seventy-three times twelve months puts us at a cost of coming out of the city of three-hundred-and-thirty-nine thousand, sixty-one dollars and eighty cents. If we went to the eighty percent plan, it would be fifty-five employees times four-thirty-seven, ninety-seven, times twelve, we're two-hundred-and-eighty-nine thousand, sixty dollars and twenty cents. So the difference that we would be saving in actual budget dollars would be fifty thousand dollars.
Yeah, and I'll have that broken out tomorrow evening in those books too, showing you the net or showing you the true savings for each plan. And I'll have the annualized, that way you know this is your total cost that you pay each year. But Mr. Miller thought for this meeting, it might be good for y'all to see some of this so that you can start thinking about, well, you know, what would you like to do? And then we can follow up tomorrow evening with your full presentation and have you, whoever's going to be here tomorrow ask plenty of questions. Because I know there's questions about the health reimbursement arrangement, how that works, you know.
Let me ask you one other question. The, the actual deductible here, is it two hun, on the, you aren't still paying?
The deductible's twenty-five hundred.
Okay, calendar year you got, and this would go to the thirty thousand. Okay, however, if it's a doctor specialist within the plan, they're paying thirty to forty-five dollars in a copay independent of the deductible, correct?
Yes, each time they go to the physician, you still have copays.
Right.
One thing that's going to be changing with health reform, which is next year, is that all your copays accumulate toward your one out package. There's a big question right now as to whether that, that has been delayed. In October of two thousand and fourteen, that's when healthcare reform will affect your plan, okay? You won't have those effects right now on your plan. Now, one thing I will point out, that approximately four percent of the premium loaded in these rates now is a direct tax from health reform, okay? So as a result of Obamacare, four percent, approximately four percent in these rates is a tax that you're now paying to help fund government subsidies, okay? So the folks that are paying for insurance now, you're funding everybody in this country, everybody in this country, as of January one, if you have a health insurance plan, whether it be individual or group, you'll be paying about four percent more as a result of the Obamacare legislation. And that goes to fund government subsidies for those who can't afford it. And quite frankly, we know that those that have it now, many of them can't afford it, but yet you'll still pay those additional taxes, okay? And then there's just tons of other things. But I'm going to tomorrow night talk more about health reform too, a little bit at the end of the meeting, okay? Any other questions for me? Just a pretty simple illustration and then we'll have more details in our presentations tomorrow evening.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else? Okay. Thank you.
Let me do a little math, quick math here on the general fund. She put in this thing that they set aside sixty-nine thousand, four-hundred-and-ninety dollars for increasing the program. Now that was based on a thirty percent. One, we're looking at a twenty-five percent, but we've got to separate that out between general fund and the forty-five. So I'm doing some math here, we're eight, twelve, thirty-four, forty-one, fifteen, thirty-three, forty, and nine, we're forty-nine employees in the general fund. So, we'll do the math here, I have to balance that. We're gaining some money in premium, okay? Roughly, let's just say five percent if, versus sixty-nine, four-nineteen is thirty percent, okay? We're gaining five percent, which is a significant number that I said. So this, minus six, we've got eleven thousand, five hundred dollars if we don't change insurance in premium savings. Because it's off the insurance.
Because of the projected number, right, of the real number.
The insurance, okay, is at twenty-five percent, okay? My rough math says eleven thousand, five hundred dollars, let's just say eleven thousand dollars that we have to, that, that we're putting back into the budget for the general fund that can be used for these things. If we go to, do you know how many employees exist in water sewer?
No, I don't know, I don't have the report.
Eight. Eight, so, fifty-five minus eight, so we're forty-seven employees.
Question?
Yes.
These numbers that we're getting, we're getting from the insurance manager, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Can I ask, why is it always, do we have a contract with, and I'm not saying nothing to Mr. Tally, but do we have a contract with him? Because the four years that I've been here, it's always dealt with him. And across the street, there's another agent, that's like. Why isn't he invited to, see if he can give us better numbers?
Well, I think that, my understanding of it was that if it went out, this one was a competitive bid, Mr. Tally is an independent agent.
Correct.
That reflects a number of insurance agencies, or another, a number of insurance companies that he put out.
Yeah, we've done that before, when we go out and Jason has always been giving us the better deals.
Forty-eight. So, general fund with two points, that's, forty-eight dollars. Two-hundred-and-ninety-five thousand, nine-hundred-and-eight thousand. And we did the same here. Forty-eight times four-thirty-seven times twelve, it's two-hundred-and-fifty-two, two-hundred and twenty-two thousand.
Now, why did you eliminate the eight?
Because the dollars that are used in the utility fund for employees and benefits are different than the dollars in the general fund that are used for employees and benefits. I E, utility rate income goes into the utility fund and pays the employees and the benefits there. There's going to be a savings there, but we're eight employees versus four, you know, forty-seven employees, yeah. Okay, what I was just trying to get a rough figure for is if we went to an eighty percent insurance plan, which is one of the options that he gave him there, okay? Which is the far right, we're looking at gaining another forty-three thousand dollars in the general fund that can be used to fund things like this. We talked about yesterday, and this is just insurance. The other piece that is in the budget, okay, is the health reimbursement program, which basically says, you know, your first two thousand dollars worth of medical expenses that you have to pay, that the insurance doesn't pay, we reimburse you. This is a city plan, okay, it's administered by an insurance company. Not every employee utilizes it. In our budget for this plan is twenty-two thousand dollars. That has to be set aside to cover those expenses. They're not paid by an insurance company, they're paid by the city, but we use it. But we use a third party administrator. I'm going to put those dollars up here, okay? Because those are dollars that we may want to consider. Now, if we said, hey, do we want to phase that program out instead of giving them a complete two-thousand-dollar reimbursement this year? Could we reduce it to a fifteen-hundred-dollar reimbursement program? Would we be saving any money? Yes, we would, but those are dollars that are available to them.
Did we ever get a firm number as to how many people have actually?
According to Laura, it's five or six people.
Okay.
Okay. And she was going to give me the report, I haven't seen the report. The other dollars, and I'm not advocating any one to, one piece here, okay? Is the part-time event coordinator, or events coordinator. If we don't do that, we're adding eleven thousand, one-hundred-and-thirty-eight dollars. The part-time to full-time, taking the existing part-time clerk in the municipal court to full-time, which is in this budget. If we didn't do that, we're eleven thousand, one-hundred-and-thirty-eight dollars. As with either one of those, if we said, let's delay the implementation of that to mid-year, then our cost is half of that, okay? The only other piece that's in there, and I got to do some math, real quick. Okay. Is all the other vacant positions. And we're only talking about general fund. Okay, if we say, we're not going to use those dollars to hire contract employees or we're not going to use those dollars to pay other things, okay? Employee pieces, okay, we gain back into the budget a hundred-and-twenty-four thousand, six-hundred-and-sixty-eight dollars. Those are the dollars that are in this budget now. That we, if we chose to change the budget, with the exception of this one, if we did any changes in the budget, these are dollars that we can use to fund these up to here. Because the utility rates fall under the, or the utility, water sewer projects fall under the utility, okay? So the question we would have to answer as a council, and what I would suggest that we did, is that we discuss these options, we discuss what we want to do here, if any of it, yes or no? And then how are we going to fund it? And, because the other option that's available to us is, you know, increasing the tax rate. And we remember that for every one cent that we increase the tax rate, we generate approximately twenty-six thousand dollars. And like I said yesterday, really, our only options are making some changes to the budget or raising taxes, okay? Now, I think when we discussed this yesterday, that the court clerk, because of the two years and, and comments on our audit, is something that we, we don't have an option to do. But here's the beautiful thing, our savings here, okay? Pays for this, so we gained eleven thousand dollars, right? I think we all agree that that's something we have to do. The question becomes over here, what do we want to do as a council? I know the police department asked for three police cars. And the cost-effective way of doing that was the lease, was a four-year lease, a four or five-year lease.
Four-year.
A four-year lease, that would cost us for three police cars roughly thirty-three thousand dollars a year. Do we want to say, do we need to replace police cars in this budget? What are your thoughts?
I cleared the employee before I cleared the car.
The argument I'll give you to that is that their statement to us was that of the priorities, police vehicles were the priority.
But they're understaffed. That was one of their other arguments, that they were understaffed and they were, they needed more employees because they.
Well, we're not at, this is not adding vehicles to the police department, this is replacing existing vehicles.
Correct.
Okay, may I ask a question?
Yes.
On the vacant positions that we're talking about, are we talking of the vacant positions that we got right now? And if we are, we're already at the bare bones, guys. We need some employees. And if we go that route, and with the bare bones that we got, we better be ready because people are going to walk.
Well, I appreciate that, I'm not advocating.
No, I understand, I understand what, what you're saying, Mr. Miller. But what I'm saying is, I'm asking this council to really consider, consider that. Because as an example, we got one employee running the sewer plant right now. That gentleman will not last a whole year by himself.
Well, this budget.
So I understand, let me finish, sir, please. I'm just asking you as my elected officials, really consider what we're putting out there. And I know what we're trying to do, and I know what you're trying to do. You know, we're trying to see what is best fits our needs. And I understand that we're in tough situations, but what I'm saying is, the employee is the one that keeps this, this city going. And if we end, end up deciding we're going to cut the vacant positions, well, we're going to be in trouble.
And at the same time, I mean, we're not going to find the money to, to fix a catwalk and, and lift stations for whenever they go out, you know, if the funds aren't there.
I, I understand.
So, I mean, there's, there's.
I, I understand, but y'all got to juggle.
It's, it's an obvious balance.
I know, I know it is.
You're dealing with personnel as well as, as infrastructure, you know.
Well, first of all, we're talking about general fund up here right now. As the sewer plant, there was a vacant position, I understand this budget in the, the utility fund fills that vacancy. So we're not talking about anything water or sewer. What we're talking about are general fund dollars right here.
We're talking of the parks, isn't it the parks?
The parks are really the only positions, we're talking about.
Consider in opening the parks to the ones that are on there.
We're, we're talking about a three, a Parks and Recreation Director, which is a vacant position. We're talking about a laborer who's in the Parks Department, plus two additional laborers that are in the Parks Department. Are the only vacant position dollars that we're talking about up here, okay? But my, my point here is, before we can figure out what we're going to cut or change, we have to ask the question, what do we need to do? And then look at the dollar figure. I am uncomfortable, and, and as the city councilman, saying, well, let's just raise the taxes five cents and not know what do we need to do. I am also uncomfortable as a councilman, knowing that we're taking part of this budget and setting it aside for deficit reduction, and we're setting it aside for reserves allocation, to raise taxes so that we can do some other things. Because in three years, when we don't have to put the money aside in the deficit, is this council going to lower the tax rate? I'm not going to be here to, to, to insure that, you know? Because those quote-unquote expenses are no longer a requirement to do. So they're, those are now dollars that, that a new council will say, oh, boy, these are dollars that we can spend on other things, and not reverse the tax rate to, to accomplish that. But I think we must first address, what are these pieces up here? And there, there are four. They are putting money into reserves, they are ensuring that we have a thirty percent deficit reduction, merit raises for employees, and police cars. Yesterday, we talked about all of the, the, the projects that you had, what was funded and what was not funded. Unfortunately, we can't use general fund dollars to do oxidation sludge removal because it's water sewer fund, okay? The only way we can fund those kinds of projects is either raising the rates or through bond issues that, that are paid for with, with rate dollars. In the first quarter of the year, we're going to address that phase two of the water sewer rates, which are going to, those dollars are going to be used to begin to address some of those other projects, okay? We're not ignoring them in, in this budget process, but the, where the money comes from becomes very important, or what color the money is, okay? So from general fund dollars, in the discussions that we've had in the budget workshops, those are the things that are not in the budget. I think we all agree that the insolvency plan, and this was reiterated by our comptroller yesterday, that we have to do a thirty percent contribution, to thirty percent deficit reduction. Well, the budget right now falls twenty thousand dollars short of that. It's about a seventy-three thousand, seventy-four thousand dollar piece that we've got to do to deficit reduction. There's only fifty thousand set aside. So we've got to take and do this, don't think we have an option.
Like we said, we're going to do this.
Clearly, it's in the insolvency plan. The insolvency plan also says we're going to do this. It doesn't say how. And if we wanted to say literally, to have a million dollars in reserves by year eighteen-nineteen for the general fund, that means we would have to have a million dollars. So over five years, what's one-fifth of it? That's two-hundred thousand dollars. That is not a realistic number. Because even if the bottom fell out of the market, or the bottom fell out of the economy, we're not going to lose certain revenue streams to the city. And that's the purpose of reserves, is to cover those revenues or those sources of income to the city that are impacted by a, a poor economy or a decent road. But it's also to have dollars aside for emergencies. Today, we have nothing, okay? I contend that we must put something aside in reserves, okay? So what I did, and I explained this yesterday, was look at those revenue sources that would be subject. that would be subject to the economy change. Those things like sales tax, those things like permit fees and license fees, those things like Parks and Recreation fees. You came up to the figure and it's about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And said, okay, well, if in five years, we're gonna have four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, what's one-fifth of that figure? The figure we came to was eighty-two thousand, seven hundred and seventy-five dollars. Now, do we put money in reserves? Is that something that this council wants to accomplish in this budget?
If we put the money in reserves, what would it go to, say, worst-case scenario? As in, as in, infrastructure, as in, you know?
Anything that the general fund spends money. So any general fund dollar that we've spent, everything from personnel to insurance to police officers, to expenses at the event center, to expenses at the pool, administrative costs of travel and training, any of those things that we put general fund dollars to is what those dollars can be used for. So setting it aside in the budget becomes an important piece so that you have the reserves.
So realistically, if something happens that, say, at the pool, it would need to come out of another line item in order to repair it, fix it, whatever?
It's a capital improvement.
Well, because if there's nothing in reserves to say it's going to...
Just like if we have another lift, well, we could actually do it this way too. Because you can transfer general fund dollars to the other piece of this. Just in the same way, we take dollars out of the utility fund or out of the revenues fund, and those are transferred back into the general fund. You know, for years, what happened in this city is we were taking money out of the income from water and sewer and putting it into the general fund. And not setting it aside for capital improvements, which is really what is supposed to be happening, is that, you know, here's our cost here. If there's any profit in providing the service, those dollars are a portion of the fee is set aside for capital improvements. We gotta fix water lines, we gotta replace sewer lines. But yeah, the reserve dollars that can be, because they are general fund dollars, they can be used anywhere. They're not like hotel motel tax dollars or street maintenance tax dollars. They are general fund dollars that we set aside to say, this is how we're gonna use them.
On the reserve dollars, at one city I worked at, we had a hailstorm and it damaged all the city buildings. Well, then we found out that, yeah, we had the buildings insured through TML. But we had to come up with deductible, and that was seventy-two thousand dollars. So that came out of the reserve dollars to pay the deductible on the hail damage.
And that's something pretty typical or pretty, you know...
Yeah, so that's just something reserves can be used for, you know? Any kind of event that happens that's not, you know, that you're not scheduled for, you don't think about, you know?
I just wonder how long the city's been passing out without a reserve?
Well, I can't go back in time. One of the things that Laura showed us was a general fund balance that went back some years ago, that at one point, the city had a sixty-day reserve. Okay, if you wanted to do my old... Has the city ever had a ninety-day reserve? I don't know the answer to that question, that far back. My point is that we stated that we would not only establish financial policies and procedures to establish and maintain a ninety-day reserve, but we also clearly stated that we would establish a ninety-day reserve by fiscal year eighteen, nineteen.
Okay. Say by, we put everything in order for the reserves, the deficit, basically everything that we've put in the insolvency plan. What does it do to the score, to the rating of the city? Is it, is it every year that it, you know, can it go up every year?
I just wanna know that we're in the process of doing that.
Well, and what they said in their rating was, they recognized that we were in the process of doing it, okay? And if the city did all of the steps that they said they were going to do in the insolvency plan, that they stayed current with those commitments in the insolvency plan, that we would be reevaluated and very probably our credit rating would go up. But they also said if we did not do the steps in that plan, that we would also be reevaluated and our credit rating would go down. And more importantly, guys, independent of standard of course, this is what we stood out there and told the citizens of the community we were gonna do. And we went through this piece where the auditor said the city is insolvent. Words bankruptcy went floating around. Luckily, we weren't as upside down as we thought. Some of the numbers were in the half-million dollar range. We ended up in the quarter-million dollar range. That we were still in the hole. But we went out there and assured the citizens and the residents of our community and the employees of this city that we were committed to reversing that and keeping the city financially strong. And part of doing that is setting aside a rainy day fund or an emergency fund. So the question becomes, do we do nothing? Do we do ten thousand dollars? Do we do twenty thousand dollars? Do we do the, a reasonable amount, which I believe to be about the eighty-thousand-dollar range? So that we're not kicking the can down the road and saying, well, instead of eighty thousand dollars a year, if we don't put any money in it this year, next year we'll put in a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the plan. If we don't do it the next year, well, we'll do it two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year the following year. You know, I think kicking the can down the road is just making that more and more unattainable. Let's leave that one there for a minute. Let's go down to the police cars. Okay? Police department's requested three police cars. Do we consider that now? If we lease the vehicles, it doesn't make any difference. If we do them at the beginning of the year or the end of the year.
Or in the middle.
Or, yeah, or the middle of the year. It's still gonna cost us that amount of money. We're thirty-three thousand dollars for three vehicles, I believe, is what it was? Is that right, Reggie?
I think so.
Okay. So...
Maybe thirty-four.
Thirty-four?
Maybe thirty-four. I can't remember exactly. Thirty-two or thirty-four.
Thirty-three? I got the total figure here, so...
Well, that's a twenty-two for two, so...
Well, here's, they've got a hundred and forty-five thousand, five hundred and sixty-eight dollars for three.
I would say thirty-three.
So each one divided by four is twelve thousand dollars. Twelve thousand, one hundred and thirty dollars.
And they said that those were fully loaded.
That's all of the equipment that they need. There's not gonna be an added expense to buying the police car. And we're not adding vehicles to the street. What we're doing is essentially taking the two oldest vehicles and taking them out of service and putting in two new vehicles, okay? Unlike if we only took one out of service and put two in. There would be some dollars that would come back to the police department. When they sell those vehicles, they were talked about in the meeting, that we could get is around two thousand dollars a vehicle back, you know? That would add four thousand dollars that could cover other expenses.
And they also mentioned about when you confiscate vehicles, if they can sell those.
And some of those dollars can be used to do that. I would contend, as Mario, that two vehicles is probably adequate for this fiscal year. There's no doubt that we must...
And I think they were, I heard them talking, they would be satisfied with that too.
And I don't know if the, I think the car that has the oldest house is George's. And George don't patrol the...
No, but in the first, in the first one, didn't they say that they would put his out and then like shift the cars down? And do the new ones for the guys that are patrolling?
They would pass down the older, older to the new, you know, pass the older...
He would still have the older vehicle. He wouldn't get a new vehicle.
The ones that would put more miles out on the street.
Well, I think they said that the chief and basically the top three with the highest mileage on there in the first place were gonna stay the same. That those were not, they were not gonna get new vehicles. And then the next ones, the next ones down, I mean, they weren't even, to me, I don't even think they had enough mileage in there to be replaced in the first place. You know, again, you know, I would rather put somebody else, another employee in, you know, in the rotation rather than the car because the cars aren't gonna protect or, aren't gonna protect the city, the police are. And if there's enough vehicles...
You gotta pay insurance and...
Well, I understand.
Here's the dollar figure.
For one police officer?
But I think that's more justifiable than a car.
Well, let's look at this.
But if you're gonna go back to employees, we're paying our employees...
Still need the car, don't you know?
They're going to somebody...
Well, I think they have the cars. I think they have the vehicles.
The one is they can pay by the city.
If we add one police officer, we're adding approximately forty-eight thousand dollars in expense. That's one police officer. Now, I appreciate what you're saying, councilman. However, I think it's important for us as a council to respect what the city staff has said are the priorities. If the police department comes and says, hey, if they're dollars, my priority is vehicles, not personnel, I would be inclined to respect that. Instead of coming back and saying, no, I'm not gonna give you vehicles, I'm gonna give you a police officer.
That was a finally instrument?
Yes.
Yeah, that's the thing.
Now, this is the piece that came up to us yesterday to say that vehicles were the priority. These are not Tahos. These are, what do they said they were?
Interceptors.
Interceptors. And we know what the payments are gonna be. You know, the reality is, we're gonna have to replace police cars, just like we're gonna have to replace equipment in our shops. And if we can do this under a lease basis, we may start a relationship with the vendor that we can develop a program to add a new leased vehicle periodically so that we are always replacing vehicles and not having to come to the council and saying, oh, please put in a police car to the budget. That we program this out for the next year so that it's automatic. So do we go forward with two police cars? Do we go forward with one police car? Do we go forward with three police cars?
Would it be more beneficial to put it off towards the middle of the...
No change in cost.
No change in cost, but, I mean...
There's no change in cost.
It's either do it or don't.
Essentially, because if we're gonna spend twenty or twelve thousand dollars for a vehicle, we can wait till the middle of the year. We're still gonna pay twelve thousand dollars for the vehicle, but we're only gonna be able to use it, we're only getting six months out of it. Whereas if we put it in the budget now and say, okay, let's fund the leases, we're gonna get the twelve months out of it. I would contend, my opinion is, at this point, that although they requested three vehicles to fund two vehicles, that's my opinion. What I'm trying to also come up with is, what is the dollar figure we need to come to in this year's budget? And how do we get there? But I, we first gotta identify needs. I think they need the two vehicles. I think I would be inclined to support that.
I would too.
Let's run on two for just a moment. So we can then figure out... Merit raises for employees. These are just the general fund employees. This is based upon their evaluations by the past city manager and their supervisors. Gives every single employee in the general fund a two to five percent increase in pay. I contend that that's a big dollar figure when we have the deficit and the other pieces. However, I, we also have to give some merit raises. Do we need to give, as I understand, a merit raise is for, based upon your performance? Hey, you're doing a good job. Let's give you some more pay. Let's increase your pay, just as we do with my employees. Generally, that's when I was within the federal government, they would say, okay, here's your merit raise piece. Here are the dollars. Here's the dollar figure you have. Fire chief, this is how much money you can give. And typically, he didn't give every employee a raise or a bonus, okay? He went to his top thirty percent or his top fifty percent got the bonuses. I would also be inclined that as the previous city manager is no longer here, that we take those dollars or a dollar figure and say, new city manager, after you've been on the ground for ninety days and looked at the structure of your city, here are the dollars that you have available for merit raises. I would be inclined to do that instead of...
Was the cost of living given?
There's no cost of living in this question.
But was there one given this past year?
No.
Even though we would have a new city manager, the evaluations are still being done by the same supervisors.
Well, and this figure is based on their last evaluations, not future evaluations. This figure was based on, okay, all of the, as I understand it, we took the last evaluation of the employee, their evaluation for a year, and some were rated here, some were rated here, some were rated here. Based upon that evaluation, determined whether they got two percent, three percent, four percent, or five percent. There was a very, very small percentage that was in the five percent. But that's not the job of council, is to determine who gets what merit raise. Really, that's the job of the city manager to determine amongst the supervisors. What we have to decide is, do we want everybody to be in the two to five percent range, okay, based upon their appraisal or their evaluation? Or do we want to give a blanket cost of living increase? Or do we want to limit those dollars to the top end? Now, we could come in and say, hey, this is eighty thousand dollars, okay? Let's give a one-point-five percent cost of living increase to every single employee. Police is collective bargaining, that's not a collective...
Yeah, but it's a collective bargaining.
Yeah, that's what they said.
You can't use the verbiage.
That's why they called it merit raise.
There you go. That's why it says merit raise.
And you see, the only problem I have with that, like I told them, and that's where it comes with merit raises. Not every employee gets a raise now.
According to the figures I saw, every employee got a raise.
No.
They went from two percent.
I sat here and told Donna and Faken, and she said, depending on the employee, on the evaluation. But not everybody gets, and it's always been like that. And that's what the problem comes, that the two to five, in the past year, well, you might have it there and I have to look at it. But in the past, only certain people got two percent of the five percent. Well, this year I didn't get one, or this year, and then they said, well, those employees didn't deserve it. I said, well, and I believe that every employee should get a raise. And if they say, well, they didn't deserve it, well, then this employee should be working here.
Then can we say in this budget as a council?
But that is true though.
Okay, guys, but how they did it before, we can say in our budget, we wanna do two percent merit raises, okay, for every employee.
But if you say every employee just...
Another not racist.
Every employee department.
No, you can, because it is a merit increase, we can find the verbiage for it.
Minus percent.
Minus eighty percent. It can be the same percentage for everyone.
Sure it can.
But then the police department has to get it also?
No. Because of the, the police department this year, and I'll argue this one, okay? The police department this year, in this budget, in this budget, sees seventy... sees seventy-nine thousand dollars in pay and benefit increases because of the collective bargaining agreement approved by the previous council. I don't care what the verbiage is, we'll let the lawyer and the city manager and the comptroller figure out the verbiage. But we as a council can say, in this budget, we want employees to get this. Whether you call it COLA, whether you call it merit raises, whatever you call it, that's what we want, okay? They can figure out the verbiage. I don't care about that right now, what I care about is what is the dollar figure? If we're two to five percent across the board, and that's what I was told, it was every employee in the general fund is what this figure is, okay? Because I asked the question, I said, is this everybody? This is forty-eight employees.
Well, so only he evaluated every, or minus the forty-seven employees, right?
Okay, yeah, because there's an equivalent dollar figure in the utility fund. But can we say that if, this is two to five percent? I think a reasonable number to be the two percent would be somewhere around sixty-five thousand dollars. And we can say, okay, let's budget in this budget, because it currently does, has zero merit raises. Sixty-five thousand dollars, okay? And whether you call that a one-point-eight percent, or a two percent, or a two-point-one percent, or you call it a merit raise, or you call it a COLA, figure it out, city staff, we wanna put it into the budget.
And then put that sixteen thousand, eight hundred and twenty-five dollars into something else, into.
No, it's not in, sixteen thousand.
It'll be taken out of the budget completely.
This, none of this is in the budget.
Yeah, that's.
Okay, what we're trying to figure out is.
But we can put it towards the reserves.
No, what you're saying is the sixty-five thousand, what do you have there you want?
Okay, here, here, the dollars that we're looking at, that we gotta find.
That's it.
For, we got twenty thousand dollars that we gotta find for the deficit. We've got twenty-two thousand dollars that we gotta find for.